challenging or even not really user friendly for our local businesses where they have that freedom to be able to submit tenders or requests for proposals. And the other challenge was at that meeting is that there's, this is time sensitive. That Public Works needs this foot aluminum dump body, this, this, this structure, they, they need this right away. So here's the dilemma. One is it's time sensitive. We, we need to support the purchase of this, of this dump body so that Public Works can get on with business. Again, I'll reiterate, it's time sensitive. Then we're faced with the dilemma of this, participating in this canoe procurement program and, and the challenges, you know, that our local businesses would, could unnecessarily face. So after the meeting, you know, we didn't know what to do because, because of this challenge. So I thought, thought about it over the next few days and then I thought maybe because it is, if it's time sensitive, that we could do what they would call a one-off, what's that, what's that called? Where you just purchase this sole, sole.
Sole sourcing.
Sole sourcing. We could do that and then not have to be bound by this canoe procurement program. So I, I, that's what I'd like to propose so that again, we can purchase this, this amenity for the Public Works Department due to some time sensitivity and then we would not be bound by this procurement program. So I, I wanted to bring that to, to, to council for council's consideration. I'm, I'm not comfortable with this canoe procurement program despite its merits and, you know, other municipalities across the country might, might have bought in. I, you know, we were through a whole ordeal with, with Enterprise Canada. We've had all of our car dealerships across Prince Everett Island that were adamantly opposed to that arrangement which bounded the council, I think for a 10-year period. And I, I just don't want to, I just don't want to parallel that, that same, those same roadblocks and same challenges. So that's what I'd like to put on the table, that we would sole source this, this dump body from, from the business out in North River Road and not be bound by the canoe procurement program. Thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Well, I don't think this is binding according to page 18. So it's a non-binding RFP. It's conceivable, there's no legally binding obligation on RMA or any proponent to proceed. Am I right or am I wrong?
We had further discussion at the committee to say that if we're going to start to use a third party to do our tendering and stuff, that would be something we'd have to look at, at the procurement level through the finance. That's, we're still waiting for it to come to us, but this was just a one-time from my understanding. Scott, would you like to explain if I'm correct in my understanding?
Chief Engineer.
Your worship through to, to Chair Public Works, so she's correct. It is a one-time off matter. It was, it was a way to speed up this process as we do have the truck sitting waiting to have a box installed on it. And it is not, it, it doesn't bind us to any future obligation whatsoever. It's a one-time purchase.
Yeah, I was referring more.
Just click, I know my dear old buddy. Go ahead.
Me?
Yep.
No, I was just taking on to Counselor Twill's that we are bound by the canoe thing. I, I don't think we're bound by the canoe, the canoe says, says right there. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't have a problem with sole sourcing based on particular circumstances to look at something. I mean, we do that with our fire equipment that we had to buy because there's really only one company you can do it with. So I don't have a problem with sole sourcing where you have to do it for expediency or for whatever it might be or whatever the circumstances. But as far as the canoe, I don't think, I don't think we're bound by that. It just, it sounds to me like it's a bulk purchasing options, something that was developed to allow four municipalities to potentially participate, but you're not obligated to do that. Anyway, just one question. Do we have to approve, although we only approved 25,000 and over, purchases 25,000 and over, we changed that?
Chair McCabe.
A while ago, didn't we? For all of our, for all of our purchases.
Just one second.
I think the best person would be at Director of Finance just to review and refresh us on that. I can't remember exactly.
Mr. Jenkins.
I don't know, I might be wrong. I'm just.
Thanks, Chair. Through to Counselor Beck. So yes, it is $25,000 with taxes. This purchase comes in over, just over the $25,000, so.
Oh, with taxes.
Yeah, so that's why we're here.
All right.
And, and to your, your question, this is just another procurement tool that we can use. We, we have many buying groups that we can participate in. There's a lot of public sector bodies that do that, university, provincial government, everything from office supply to payloaders. So it's just another tool that we can use. Yep. Okay, thanks.
Counsel Bernard, you had your light on and then Matar jumped ahead of you, so we'll just put your weight there. Then Counsel Matar.
No, thank you, Your Worship. I was just going to say that basically same as Dan said. I mean, the federated Canadian municipalities or the federated, probably in this case PEI municipalities, have a contract with, with different procurement, this one being canoe. It went to a public tender. This, this is what they're recommending committed to public tender. I'd rather do it this way than to go sole source. At least they would have checked everywhere. So I'm okay with going with this. I mean, it's still, it was a public tender that was, it was under canoe procurement as opposed to the city.
Just clarification on that, Mr., Mr. Adams? So canoe was the successful bidder or did canoe do the bidding?
No, no, they're the procurement service.
Yeah, no, but that's, I'm just trying to clarify.
So Your Worship, canoe is the program. So they are a third party that helps municipalities across Canada. So there's many municipalities that can take advantage of this program. And essentially what they do is they help buying power. They help small municipalities team up and get better buying power from some of these bigger companies. So what they do is they do the tendering process for various types of equipment and material out there. And then they have these open RFPs that we can take advantage or any municipality that participates in these, in this program to purchase at this reduced rate as a result of this buying power of, of teaming up with municipalities across Canada.
Yeah, it's really not a lot different than when we used to team up with the province for tendering if we're getting large heavy equipment and get better prices. So to me, this is clean, it's done properly and I'm okay with it. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you to the Chair. I'd, I'd be supportive of moving forward as is. Again, this is just another procurement vehicle that actually might even be a bit quicker process than sole sourcing because they have the buying power and the ability to source with many various vendors out there. This is very akin to what provincial government does with the Atlanta Procurement Act and a number of other different buying powers. So I don't think moving to sole source would move this any faster than what we have here and it's not binding us into anything. It was just a procurement vehicle for us.
Counsel Twill, second time.
Yep. So I want to go back to the discussion we had at the committee level. There, again, I'll reiterate, there was a lot of confusion and discussion and you yourself, Mr. Mayor, you made, made it quite, quite known that you weren't supportive.
Yeah, I voted against it.
Yeah, you voted against it. And you referenced the enterprise, enterprise.
Fleet management.
Arrangement.
Yeah. You were part of that debate.
So, you know, so, so there really is no, no comparison, comparison to, to enterprise PEI. And this doesn't preclude future tenders that the city be putting out for whether it be a dump body or any other amenities or any other fixtures that are required for city vehicles, whether it be Public Works, whether it be police, whether it be fire, water and sewer, parks and recreation. So just so I understand this correctly, that if I vote for this, this does not bound City Council or the city of Charlottetown in any which way, shape or form, and this is strictly a one-off, correct?
Okay. Counsel McCabe.
I, I need that before I vote.
Counsel McCabe, hear his question?
I did. I think that it was clearly said that you're right. Yeah, that's what I understand, but if.
You want to refer to Mr. Adams, Chief Engineer?
To say that we're not tied in, to say that this is a one-time procurement and to say that this is a recommendation from the staff. I think it's pretty clear.
Clear, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Twill, is that clear?
Just, just, just one other question if you don't mind. With the, okay, so, so it says here 23,557 dollars plus applicable taxes. So with the taxes in, what is the total cost?
28,000.
28,000?
Yeah, well, it's over, it's over the 25,000. Why do you want to know that?
Okay, so it's not going to come back in harness where we're, we're ready to this procurement deal.
But you, you called me into this debate now. If you were at the table, you were at the table.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, and there was a lot of discussion around the table.
So there's Drake Truck Body that make these body, these boxes. There's also Wilson's out of Trolle if they're still in business. With canoe, they go across the country and they buy in bulk, so I don't know where they're coming from. And with Enterprise Fleet Management, Enterprise Fleet Management, we went through this vehicle. But it tells us over and over again, we need a procurement bylaw so that we know that framework. And you've been asking for it, I've been asking for it, so has the Chair of the Canadian Committee on Finance Administration. So we have to get that procurement bylaw in place so we have a framework to work within. And that will take care of the issues that you're concerned about, that I'm concerned about too. Thank you.
Still has nothing to do with this. This, this was done through procurement. This was done properly.
Based on recurrent procedures.
We have a two-page.
There's nothing, I don't know what you're talking about. Come back to haunt you.
Yeah, we, we have a two.
It's a clean public tender that was done.
Yeah.
Through canoe procurement, we're doing it for PEI municipalities.
Yeah.
And the municipality can tap into it.
Yeah, we have a two-page policy on procurement.
This may be a one-time off.
And.
If something comes up, council wants to do it again, it'll not be up to council.
Procurement bylaw will protect the interests of the citizens that live here, work here and provide employment. So that's why we need that procurement bylaw. Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel Dron.
In favor?
Ten, zero. Next one, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee, Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McLeir. It is resolved that as their, as per the conditions of the public tender for Charlottetown Police Station Generator Upgrade, the submission of Ainsworth Incorporated in the amount of $185,400 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And that council approves the budget transfer of $95,000 from the Emergency Preparedness Capital Budget, 125 kilowatt generator police station account to the municipal buildings, Charlottetown Police Station, 10 Kirkwood Drive building account. And that council approves the budget transfer of $18,210 from the Emergency Preparedness Capital Budget, 80 kilowatt generator station two electrical upgrades account to the municipal buildings, Charlottetown Police Service, 10 Kirkwood Drive building account. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Counsel Bernard, Counsel Ramsey and Counsel Beck.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, I thought I read, and it was quite a while ago, but I thought the province had a subsidy program for these generators for our public buildings. I don't see any money coming from the province in this budget. Yep, Chair.
Chair, right there. Go ahead there.
Yep, so from what I understand, those were for warming center facilities. So for facilities that would qualify as a warming center, they were eligible for funding through the province for these generators because this is a city-owned building that is, this isn't, has, the police station is a very old generator. I think it's even inside if I was correct. So it's to upgrade for safety and stuff, but it's not considered a warming center, so it did not qualify for the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Could we just go on recess? Apparently there's no audio going out into the wide world, wide web. So are we getting that corrected? So anybody's watching, they're not hearing the debate. Well, do we want to wait for Rory to fix it or do we want to continue on as silent movie?
It's the audio, screen audio, but the audio.
It will come on. Okay, okay. Okay, Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for that, Chair, Your Worship. There is a generator there now, Scott, am I, or Chair, I'm sorry. Through you to Scott, you can answer. There's one there now, but we want to upgrade to a larger one. Am I being told, is that what I'm reading here?
Again, from what I understand, the current generator at the police station is inside. It's needing upgrade. It's been there for way too long and it, it's being replaced to current standards.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, would that old generator be able to be used anywhere else within, within the city or is it toast? Thank you.
What I can tell you is that all of our city-owned buildings will have access to generator either permanent or portable. So we have had the West Royalty Community Center, Hillsborough Hall Community Center have been upgraded with the programming that Counsel Bernard was talking about. Malcolm Dara Center already has the permanent one. Portable ones will be used at Cody Banks or Sherwood Rec Hall at that time. And there was another, and Fire Station Two was another portable station. So everyone will have access.
Yes, and I understand that. I'm just wondering, once the old one is taken out, it's done, right?
It's archaic, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You looking to buy in one?
Okay, Counsel Beck.
Just wondering what's the turnaround time in this, Chair? Getting this going, getting it installed?
I'm going to have to let Scott answer that question.
Chief Engineer.
Your Worship through Counselor Beck. I'll take that under advisement and get back to you. I'm not sure of the schedule that was submitted, so once I have a check, a chance to check on it, I can circulate an email to all of council to advise the.
Thank you.
Questions called.
I have a question, Mayor Brown.
Oh, go ahead there, Counsel Dron. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Thank you. I, I remember a couple of years ago, we were going to upgrade the police station and that generator was going to come to the community center in Sherwood there. And then I found out there this year that that didn't proceed, but is there any plans for this generator as Counsel Ramsey said before? That was the initial plan a couple of years ago. I think we were dealing with Chief Mamie at the time or, so I just, I just want to ask, what's happening with that generator? And when is the generator coming for the community center in Sherwood there?
Counsel McCabe.
I think this, the generator at the police station is, it wouldn't be up to code or snuff to use at the facility, Counsel Dron, but their plan is that they are going to take in a portable generator for your community center. Scott, where are you taking the portable generator from?
So Your Worship through to Counselor McCabe and, and Counsel Dron. So the, so prior to this year, when we installed the new permanent generators at both Hillsborough and West Royalty Community Centers, they had two portable, large portable generators that could power each of those buildings. So they're quite a powerful generator. And so those generators are, we're working with electrician right now to understand transfer switches and all that good stuff that needs to be installed in those buildings so that we can get that all installed so that it's more or less plug and play when, when or if we ever need those generators at those facilities.
Okay. Chief, do you want to add? I, I know that we're belaboring this, but Counsel Dron, I understand your concerns because we're coming up to hurricane season. We want to make sure we have backup power. Chief, do you have anything?
Yes, Your Worship, thank you, through to Counselor Dron. The, the generator coming out of the police station or being repurposed there or upgraded is not deemed suitable for any of the other buildings that the city owns. So it is being retired. The upgrade to the police station is going to take care of their full needs where the old generator did not. And the plans for the, the Sherwood facility, there was an assessment done on what the electrical needs would be and that is still being processed and it'll soon go, I'm assuming through the Public Works Department, it'll be tendered and, and completed much like this Charlottetown Police Station task.
Counsel Dron, do you want to follow up?
Well, thank you. I, I, you know, I find it frustrating sometimes because we, we agreed to this or I agreed to that even when I was Chair of the Police Committee. We were going to take that and repurpose it and then we said what we're going to do with the budget at that time was do the electrical outlets and, and get it upgraded, but obviously that wasn't done. And here we are, three, four, five, six years down the road and nothing's been done yet. So it's frustrating. Again, I have the same lady phoning me every, you know, two months asking, when is it coming? And oh, well, it's on its way, it's on its way. So I just, you know, I can't stress enough to, to try to move this ahead. I know we've said it in budget time and it, and it was a shock that it wasn't done. So, you know, all these promises over the last number of years of we're getting it, it's moving, it's coming, we're getting used ones now. we're getting used ones now," I, I hear, "We're getting one from the Hillsborough Community Hall, and it was a portable one." Is that going to be permanent? What does portable mean?
Okay, Counsel, do you want to answer that, Chief? Just, he's, yeah. Go ahead.
Once again, thank you, Your Worship, through the Counsel Dron. Portable is just that, we have two, they're termed whackers, but they're two sixty-five, I think, and ninety-five kilowatt generators, seventy-three and ninety-five. And they can power, and as we've used them in the past, for Hillsborough Community Center, West Royalty, the Station Two in Sherwood, and anywhere else we've needed them. They are still fit and able to do that. As Director, or, sorry, the Manager of Public Works mentioned, the, the wiring issues are being sorted out at the new buildings that they'll be used at, and they are still purposeful for the city as we move forward and try to get the new upgrades.
Thank you for that.
Questions called? All those in favor? Counsel Dron?
In favor?
Okay, ten-zero. Next one, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee, Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for pest control services, city facilities, and skunk and raccoon removal, the submission of Atlantic graduate pest management in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars and forty cents, ten thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and forty cents for city facilities, plus fifty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars for skunk and raccoon removal, over thirty-six months, plus all applicable taxes, with an option to be renewed for an additional two years, be accepted, and further, that the mayor and C E O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel McKinnon?
I get the cue there, sir.
Yeah, no, you're after Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Question, I guess, in, in the process, of how the process works, and in light of there's been some information leaked in the past, but this seemed to be on C B C radio on my way in here today, that the company was already awarded this contract. And here we are, voting on the resolution now. So how did it get out into the news before it came to council?
Counsel McCabe?
I unfortunately didn't hear that, and I don't know if someone, where that information would have came to. The only thing I can say-
Wasn't me.
-is that it was discussed at our committee level. It was recommended at our committee level, that was livestreamed. And whether they took that information to assume that it was a passed-done deal, but I don't know. Did they interview someone in specific, or?
Just one, Counsel McKinnon, hold on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel McCabe. Yes, they did interview the Manager of Public Works on the C B C radio at four o'clock this afternoon.
Counsel McKinnon? Counsel McCabe?
Well, he's right there. Perhaps we should ask him.
Just want to make sure, I just want to make sure you want to defer it to him, because we want to make sure we follow the process. Procedure was followed, thank you, Counsel. Yep. Chief, Chief Engineer?
Yes, Your Worship.
Newsmaker?
So, following that committee meeting, a request came in from C B C to do the interview, and came through comms to do the interview. And there was no commitment stating who was being awarded the work. They asked a question about the R F, or R F P that was out, and it was closed. And they knew the information because of part of the public package from the Public Works Committee meeting. So they had all the information. And the interview, as typical, is, you know, it's conditional council final approval. So sometimes that information does get cut out, unfortunately, and, and they just paste, or they just play what they would like to hear, or what they think's going to garner listeners. But I can rest assured that it was, we said, you know, it was coming to council as a recommendation from staff, that it be awarded to Atlantic Graduate, because they overall had the better price and, and the better scoring. So that's why we made the recommendation. And again, it was a public knowledge through the committee meeting.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just, just on that, just a reminder that when, when requests come in from the media, they're to go to the Chair of the appropriate standing committees first, and it's their decision on who will give that interview. And it's my understanding that Counsel McCabe was not even aware of the request, so...
No, no, I, I was included in an original email at that time. But I chose not to speak to it until-
Okay, my apologies then, yep.
It was cleared through here.
All right, thanks.
Counsel Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I, I just have some concerns with this. I know the, the company, you know, it had the contract for probably fifteen years, and people were upset, so we went with a different company. Now we go back to the same company, only this time it's a twenty-two-thousand-dollar-a-year contract, and it's for three years. Like, a lot of contracts we're putting out now, we're putting them out for a year, see if it's any better, see if it's an improvement. And then we would sit there and say, "Okay, we'll have it one year, and maybe if the city and the, the company are happy, we'll go to two years." But this is a three-year, you know, at twenty-two thousand dollars, just for the skunk and raccoon removal. I get calls probably two, three times a week, as, as Mr. Adams is aware, because I forward them all to him. Because it's only for four days, three or four days a week. They don't put the traps out on Friday, they don't put them out on Saturday, and they don't check them on Monday, so they put them out on Monday. So that's only a three-day work week, at twenty-two thousand dollars a year. You know, I don't even know if they put them out in winter, because I, I had a person call me, and they said, "Well, we can't put the trap out in the winter in case it catches it, and then the animal will freeze." So, you know, is this something that it could go back to the committee to see if there could be a way of, of saying, "Okay, you know what? If, if a company comes in and catches an animal, then you should be paid instead of a monthly, you know, a, a contract of, well, twenty-two thousand, what is that a month?" You know, it's almost two thousand dollars a month, whether you're working in the winter, or, or whether you're not. And a lot of times, over the last number of years, you know, people call and say, "Well, there's not enough traps." You know, does this new company, the new company getting the, the contract, do they have enough traps? I mean, I have a resident here that's been for, for years and months, and they can't catch this one, and, or they wouldn't come and check the trap, or, you know, it, it just seems so frustrating that an expectation on the residents that we have this company that'll go right away and catch this skunk and help them, or raccoon. And that's not the case. You know, you know, someone calls me on a Thursday, "Well, they're not coming out Thursday," you know, "because they're, they're busy," and then it's, you know, "They're not coming till Monday." It just seems such a, a large amount of money for what we're getting. I'm just wondering if the committee could possibly look at, you know, is there a better way? Is there a better monetary way, you know, even for the contractor, the new contractor coming in? If he could catch more skunks and, and raccoons, then maybe, you know, he'd get more money, rather than just giving a, a certain amount of money, whether you get a skunk or raccoon or not. It just, you know, we've been dealing with this for ten, ten years now, and it's never good. And now to see it going for three more years, I, I just, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering if it can go back to the committee to see if there's a mutually agreeable way of, of handling this problem, and which would be good for the contractor, and will be good for the resident. Because it's so frustrating when they say, "We, we don't have enough traps, or we don't have enough people to check them, so you're on your own." And a lot of times, the resident goes and gets another company, which could have been this contractor, but, you know, it's just, I'm just thinking, there's, it's so quick just to say, "Okay, you know what? We don't like this contractor, we're going with another one, and we're going down the same road." So, that's what I'm asking. I'm just asking if we could look at it through the committee.
Counsel McCabe?
Sure. Well, so I, first of all, I think we're one of the few municipalities in all across Canada that actually run this program. So the residents of Charlestown having this even as a little bit of an opportunity are pretty fortunate. The thing is, is that I think we need to do, and we've had this discussion at committee, a little bit better job educating what the purpose of this program is. They're not going out to people's residence to guarantee that they're going to trap an animal. They, we have hired them to help assist, to put traps on their yard with the hope that they'll trap, but it's not, they're not coming in to do pest control for individual residents who have issues. And I understand what you're saying, Counsel Dron, but it's kind of like, I think of this as similar to when I hire my snow removal for my driveway in the winter, you pay them, and you hope that you don't have a lot of snow, and they get paid. But if you do have a lot of snow, then they have a lot of extra work. So it's kind of, in my understanding, that's how I look at that, when it comes to that. As far as coming back to committee, I think the only question that, coming back to committee, is if do we always want to continue with trapping and, and doing this? And I do think that we've talked about having education and information for residents, so they understand what this actually means to have this program.
Thank you. Can I respond to that?
Counsel Dron, second time, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and, and I appreciate that. So when you say there, there's nobody across Canada, or very few, well, why don't we look at that? Maybe we could take the, the half the money that we're putting out and use it for education, to help people. You know, I, I, that's all I'm saying. It's a lot of money, you're tying yourself into three years again. And, you know, like I said, we don't have all this extra money, as every time we come to a meeting, we're borrowing from extraordinary expenses. So why can't we look at something that, you know, we could look at something that if, if nobody else is doing it, and, and it's working for them, why are we doing it? You know, it, it's something that we could, you know, here you're, here you're ready to pull the plug and get tied in for another three years in a situation that may not be what you're looking for. You know, maybe go for one year, and then if it's mutual, agree upon, go, go for two. But I mean, you're locked in for three. I mean, it's the same old saying. I get calls from residents every day, or, well, not every day, I shouldn't say that about this. But once a week, a few times a month, they're not happy. They're expecting the city of Charlestown to come catch their raccoon or raccoon. Whereas the problem is, the company, I'm not saying this company or the last company, they drop a trap off. So it's up to you, as a resident, to check that trap a couple of times a day to see if there's anything in it. And then, if they catch something, then you're supposed to phone them to come and get it. I just think it's a, it's a poor service that we're doing. Now, if I, if I contract this company and say, "Listen, I got a skunk here," then they're going to pay more attention to me. I'll, I'll say, "There's nothing in it today," you know, it's just, it's, it's not, it's not a good situation, and that's why I can't support it. I'm just asking to go and look at it at more, with a, with a more stringent eye, I guess, to look at this, rather than just signing it off and kicking the can down the road as we did the last ten years.
Counsel McCabe?
I have no problem if council turns down this resolution as is, but right now, that's what's on the floor, is the resolution, whether we're going to support this tender that's already been put out for three years. I don't think we can just randomly say we're going from three to one. Okay, Scott's correct, that we're confirming that we can't just do that. We have to go based on what was put out, Counsel Dron. So the only way I think we can go back and look at what you'd like is, is if this resolution doesn't pass here tonight.
Counsel Twill?
For a deferral.
Are you moving for a deferral?
Sure.
Okay, he's moving a deferral, so he needs a seconder. Seconded by Counsel McKinnon, so we're going to talk about the deferral. Counsel Twill, speak to the deferral.
Yeah, you know, if, if councils wish to go back to committee to have further discussions, but I, I want everyone to know that I'm a strong supporter of the Skunk and Raccoon program. This is a good service for our residents. I get calls as well. You know, skunks, the skunk program's been around a long time. I was instrumental in adding the raccoon component back a number of years ago. It served our residents well. I did ask the question about how many days a week, Scott, as you can recall, about the service. And you said, you know, I said, "Is it seven days?" And you said, "Well, it all depends, because there's two, two phases to this, this contract. It deals with city buildings and deals with individual property owners." I mean, you know, if council wishes to go back, we can have further clarification, further clarification. I think what Counsel Dron is referring to is to have consistency and predictability with the program. I have no problems having further discussion, but I, I want to clear, I'm a strong supporter of the Skunk and Raccoon program. I think it's a good program, and just because it might not be prevalent across Canada, so what? They're, I'm sure they're doing things that we don't do. This is a good program for our residents.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. And for me, I don't know, either council decides they're not going to have the program, or they're going to have the program. And I think if we're going to have the program, this went to tender. You got two tenders, thirty-two-hundred to seventy-seven dollars a month, or nineteen-hundred dollars a month. So, I'm, you know, I'm not sure what other discussion can happen, only that does the city want to cancel this program, or do they want to continue it? Because if they want to continue it, you've got two tenders, probably the only two people that are in the business. Those are the prices. I'm okay with it. We've been doing it for years, and I, and I agree with Counsel, Counsel Twill. We do get the calls. It is a service. They drop off the traps, they dispose of the skunk or the raccoon, what have you, with, with proper methods. So it's, it's been a program that's been proven, that the public wants it. So to me, if, if we're not going to pass this, the only discussion is, do we want to have this program, or do we want to cancel it? And right now, I say, continue with the program.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, you know, I, I agree, I think we need the Skunk and, and Pest Control program. And full disclosure, I'm using the program as we speak right now. So I'm thankful for that, and having that help in my service in my yard, which is being tore up by skunks as we speak. You know, I think in, in line with what Counsel McCabe indicated, this is probably good value for money. It's, it's like the snow removal analogy. I mean, you know, they could catch ten thousand skunks, and it might not be worth the, the money that was paid out, but at the same time, they could catch a hundred skunks, and, you know, that's the way it goes. So it really, it's like the, you know, you're paying for that service, and it could be very valuable to many residents, myself included. So I won't be able to support the deferral going forward. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. Just for the record, too, if we do defer this, we will be out, we will be without a service provider as of September first. So that'll have to go back through committee, back re-tendered, blah, blah, blah. So just to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay. Counsel Dron, I can't see you, so I'm just going to allow you to speak on the deferral.
Thank you. No, and I, there's some miscommunication here. I'm not, I'm not saying anything whatsoever about the city facilities Pest Control Services. We certainly need those, and, you know, this, this company is certainly, can do that work, which is a good price, it's great. Alls I'm asking is the Skunk and Raccoon Services. I get the calls that people are not happy, that, you know, the, the traps are not there, the numbers for the traps are not there. You know, they can't come on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and, and sometimes on Monday, I guess they could put it in. So it's not a twenty-four-hour service, it's a, it's a four-day week. So that's why I'm saying, if, if they could catch more, they could get paid more. If, if they don't catch anything, you know, I, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a, a contract that could be tweaked, the Skunk and Raccoon contract. And that's why I was saying, just to defer it, to see, you know, are we the only ones in Canada with this? You know, a jurisdictional scan, that, you know, are, are we the only ones? And if there's other companies or other municipalities doing this, maybe they have a different way of doing it. You know, it's per, per catch or something. Whereas, you know, the contractor, there'd be an incentive to catch more, which would keep the residents happier. That's, that's what I'm saying. I, I get the call, they're not happy. So this is why I'm saying, just to see if you could tweak it a little bit, to, to make it maybe better. That's all I'm saying. But if you, if you don't want to do that, that's, that's your choice. Thank you.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah, I'm not interested in, in a deferral. I concur with Counsel Bernard that this is a publicly tendered program. We got two submissions, one which is fifty thousand dollars less than the other. Public Works has worked with this firm in the past. You know, we went looking for a Cadillac, I guess we're getting a Honda.
Or a Lada.
Hopefully not a Lada. But, you know, anyway, I think we go ahead. It's, we follow due process in what we're looking for. This is about the best we get, and go ahead.
Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. I think, again, it comes back to us getting out some information about what this program is. It is a limited service. It's not a come in and take care of what's going on in your own property. I am going to let Scott clarify, because I think some of the information that Counsel Dron has, might not be quite accurate, but Scott, could you?
Chief Engineer.
Thank you, Your Worship, through the man, through the chair. So yes, so it is a five-days-a-week service. They are open eight to five. One thing we have to recall, just like any, any type of work that we do, when someone has a concern or complaint, it can't, sometimes it can't be rectified tomorrow. We can't just deploy a trap the next day. There's a list. And so that's some of the challenges. We've had calls on Thursdays and people expected the next day. Well, there's only so many traps to go around. And to go with the trap issue, I know there's a couple of comments about just not enough traps. We have seen unprecedented amount of growth in terms of call volume. So from 2022 to 2023, we nearly doubled our calls, up to 600 calls. So there is no way of anyone, us or the contractor, predicting that they were going to receive that many calls. Significant, significant amount of work associated with that. So that's why it ended up being quite a long list that took to get through. And they, you know, it's a lot of juggling and balancing and moving traps around. So that is one of the bigger challenges. So in the proposal that we received from the company, Land graduate, they had currently noted that they have 50 skunk and 50 raccoon traps. And if awarded, they're committed to purchasing additional traps so that they can ensure they handle the call volume. And that information, we made it very public in that tender document to show that the call volumes had significantly increased over the past number of years, and we expected the successful proponents to be aware of that and be prepared for that. In terms of the homeowners checking a trap, that's pretty standard. So the trap gets set out in the backyard. All they, all the company asks is you take a look at your back window before 8:00 a.m. to see if anything has been trapped. If the door is down, you call the number that was left on a little, on a pamphlet that was left in your door, and they'll come pick it up and dispose of it. That's all it is. It's because there are legislations here in the province that they must follow to maintain their license. We have to ensure that all animals are being treated fairly, in a humane manner while alive. So they have to check them a minimum once per day. And so that is set at 8:00 a.m. every morning, so that it is standard across the board. And it also allows the contractor to plan their day. You know, they get 100 calls at eight, before 8:00 a.m., well, they're going to try to bound, make sure they balance that and get those, all those traps picked up before that time limit runs out. They don't want to receive 100 calls at 4:00 p.m. knowing that they have to pick up 100 traps sometime that night. So that's why that 8:00 a.m. is there. It's for them to be able to schedule their work. Hopefully, I was able to explain that.
A lot more Pepe Le Puce and Roger the raccoons. Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm not disputing this company that they can't do the work. They've done it in the past and they've done it for several years successfully. But what happens when they set a trap on Thursday and we don't get, they don't get the skunk until Saturday morning? And if they're only open five days a week, eight to five, is the animal stuck in the trap for the rest of the weekend? Counsel McCabe, you had mentioned that we don't have a service provider after September 1st. Is that what? I'll get back to the answer, but on that one, sorry. And so I'm just supporting the deferral, asking if we can go back and tweak the contract just to get better service for the residents if we're going to keep this program going. I think if there's a need for it, I've used it myself and we get residents using it, but get more details, work out, tweak it around a little bit, and that's all I'm asking.
Counsel McCabe, and then Counsel Twill a second time. Counsel McCabe.
So I'm going to let Scott clarify the trapping on Thursday, picking up on Saturday question, but I do know that what I mean by after September 1st rent kills contract is no longer valid. So we will not, if we have to go back to committee and do this, there will be a time lapse before.
Three months.
Yeah, at least before we have a service provider.
Chief Engineer, can you add a little bit of freshness to this issue?
Certainly, Your Worship, through the counselor. So I, when I mentioned they're open five days a week, so they, they'll set the trap through Monday to Friday, eight to five. However, they always have an on-call person 24/7, 365 days a year. So if a skunk or raccoon is trapped Saturday morning, you look in your backyard and you see the trap door closed, you call them by 8:00 a.m., it will be picked up that morning. That's their license. If they don't do that, they will lose their license or be fined by the province. Again, they have strict legislation that they must follow. We don't legislate them or, or regulate that. That is all provincial. So they have some strict guidelines that they, or regulations that they have to follow to ensure that they are treating these animals humanely. And that's all within their IRP. And it's been, we've seen it before and we anticipate that they should have no issue doing that in the future.
Counsel Twill, second time.
So, once again, Scott, if you don't mind. So it is, it is, it is five days a week. So resident phones me on Friday, 10 o'clock. I can see phone Public Works. And they'll make the arrangements, contact the contractor to set the trap on a Friday. So, pardon me.
Just, just, just finish up.
Yeah. So, so I know Counselor Duran referred to four days, but that might have been in the past. It's not four days. It's truly five days a week. That's the service. That was in the tender. Is it safe to say that that was in the tender, Scott?
Okay. So it has to go through the chair. Chair, do you want to answer that?
I think I want to clarify that if he calls on Friday, resident calls on Friday and there's no traps, they won't be getting a trap on Friday. I think that we only have so many traps. We've already heard that a few times tonight. I think this goes back to, again, we need to get the information and education out about what this program is. Right now, we got to decide, are we going to offer this program? Are we going to offer it based on the resolution that's in front of us?
No, 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 we're moving on. Counsel McLeer. Counsel McLeer. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just, yeah, just the context. I know, I certainly know in our neighborhood and most surely, skunks are a problem this year. I mean, residents are, anyway, they're here, there and everywhere. But just the context, I know last year, we had a personal experience at the house, had a call, a likeness to come in, a company, and they just caught the skunk within whatever, a day or two. But that was $225. I didn't call, or whatever, didn't call, said he didn't think of a, anyway, so, you know, you context that over 22,000 a year, it's about 100 skunks. So, anyway, I don't know if that helps anybody. Thanks.
Thanks for the math. Counsel Duran, just wrap it up.
Oh, I'm doing, thank you.
You spoke twice, Counsel. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. You did. Okay. That's the deferral. That's it. That's what we're talking about, the deferral right now. Okay. Question on the deferral?
Questions called on the deferral.
How many in favor of the deferral? Okay, Counsel Twill, Counsel McKinnon, and Counsel Duran?
Yes, please.
Okay. Against? Seven, three, and, okay. So let's go back to the main motion. We've already spoken to the main motion. Question's been called for the main motion. Yes, it has.
I spoke.
You spoke twice on the, on the original resolution, too. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Question's called.
Is it five days?
Five days. Counsel McCabe, five days, 10 days, what is it?
Well.
Go ahead.
Scott just clarified that the program is for five days and we are going to ensure that we get this information out so everybody has the same information, correct?
That, yes, Your Worship, through to Counsel McCabe. So yes, they will set traps if they have traps available, but we have to be mindful. If you call, if you call Public Works on Friday at noon hour, the likelihood of that getting out on Friday, just because of timing, right? They have only so many staff. They have to schedule their day accordingly. It may not get out until Monday morning.
They can, and they can hire, as Counsel McLeer just said, that they can go and they can hire on their own and get their skunk. This is a city program that we're providing for the residents of the Charlotte Town. It's pretty limited, but we're going to make sure everybody has the same information and understands what it is. But if it's something that's urgent, I would suggest that they contact Pest Control.
Okay. Questions called by Counsel Ramsey from Ward 5. All those in favor? Yea? Okay. Against? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
Nay, please.
Nine, one. Okay. Next resolution there.
Thank you, Your Worship. New Business Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, second by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved effective immediately and as recommended by His Worship, Mayor Philip Brown, the following board appointments be approved. For the Capital Area Recreation Corporation, the CARRY Board, Jim Cody. For the Charlotte Town Area Development Corporation or CADC Board, Doug Wright. For the Senior Engagement Committee, Diane Smith. And for the Youth Engagement Committee, Samantha McLean.
Just to clarify, when you look at Jim Cody, that is for the chair of the CARRY Board. Question? You have questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I thought when we changed the procedural bylaw, and these are now backed through appointments through you, that they don't come to council anymore for approval. I thought they were just your appointments.
No, these are public appointments. These are public appointments.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thanks.
Question?
Questions called.
Questions, Scott. All those in favor? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay.
Now, I think we have another, oh, two readings to establish new bylaws. Enforcement Amendment Bylaw, number 2024 hyphen EA hyphen 01. Enforcement and Summary Proceedings Bylaw, wow, number 2024 hyphen ESB hyphen 01. Want to read it out?
Yes, Your Worship. Thank you. To establish the City of Charlotte Town Enforcement Amendment Bylaw, number 2024 EA dash 01, which will allow amendment to certain City of Charlotte Town bylaws to include reference to the City's Enforcement and Summary Proceedings Bylaw, number 2024 dash ESP dash 01. And therefore be it resolved that City of Charlotte Town Enforcement Amendment Bylaw, number 2024 EA 01, be read a second time and that the said bylaw now be approved and adopted.
Shall it pass? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Excellent, sir. Thank you.
Your Worship. To establish the Charlotte Town Enforcement and Summary Proceedings Bylaw, number 2024 ESP dash 01, to authorize the establishment of enforcement officers and issuance of municipal offense tickets for contraventions. Therefore be it resolved that City of Charlotte Town Enforcement and Summary Proceedings Bylaw, number 2024 ESP dash 01, be read a second time and that the said law, bylaw now be approved and adopted.
Shall it pass? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
Yea.
Great. Okay, this is great. This is finally on its, on a railway that's going to eliminate, I think, going through that process of coming back to council. That's my understanding, Counsel Twill. Okay, 10-0. Thank you. Okay. We have to go to, motion to move.
Just one second. Just, are we not going to discuss this notice of motion, sir?
It's not here. Where is it?
What do you mean it's not here?
It's not on the agenda. Did you see the agenda?
Yeah, well, it's, I, I'm reading it right here. It's the second thing.
What notice of motion are you reading there, Counselor Duran?
About my, the streets. It's under the, like I say, it's.
Is, is, am I missing something here, Chief? It's in the report? So can we clarify it, Chief?
It's not part of the agenda, Your Worship.
No, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, but it's in, it's in the report.
What report? What page?
Oh.
What page?
Page 10.
Page 10, that's in the report that we already discussed, the resolutions. And I think.
Yeah, but that.
Go ahead.
That's, I'm looking at page six.
Again, I think that Counsel Bernard has made reference, this is for information and this was discussed at the Public Works Standing Committee. And it was also, we took into discussion of that million dollars, the additional million dollars that this could cover, correct, Counsel McCabe?
They were waiting on that, and I know we're waiting. Scott's going to do a full, well, he's not here anymore.
No, Scott's right there.
Oh, sorry, Scott, I didn't see you. A full presentation to council on what, similar to this. This was to show the ratings of the scales that Counsel Duran, that you had requested. And it's indicative there that Cedar Avenue was put on hold due to the sidewalk installation for next year.
Yeah.
You'll see that half of Parkview Drive went from poor to very poor and that hope was with this new funding that has been approved, that it will be completed this year, that part of Parkview Drive, due to the severity of the depreciation for that rose.
So can, can we have a discussion on this or?
What's the discussion? It, it was.
Well, this, it's like you say, I've, I've been waiting probably 70 days for this.
Right.
And, you know, here it is saying what's going on, like.
Yeah.
You know yourself, Mayor Brown, you know, Cedar Avenue was falling apart. And it's, it's one of the very poor as it's determined here. So you go around all the residents and, and last year, you know, we scared them all with this active transportation pathway. So we, we finally came to our senses and stopped that. So the next year, just before Christmas, there was all these posts put out again and, and, you know, pink things all over the pavement. And then what, what's going on now? Well, a sidewalk. Well, the residents don't want a sidewalk. You know, they've told me about, you know, snow removal being on their property, the sidewalk taking up most of their, their front yards. We live in a street here that we don't have very big front lawns. I've been living here for 14 years. You'd be lucky to see three people walk the street, except for the former deputy mayor's mother. She exercises every day. We don't have the traffic needed for a sidewalk.
Okay.
You know, we've stressed that. I can't stress it enough. But you say to me, not you, but, but this report says to me, we're not paving your street again because the sidewalk's been cut in the budget.
Right.
You know, the, the people in the street don't want a sidewalk. When they were interviewed, they said, anything but a transportation pathway. But, but, you know, I, I talked to the manager about this and I've been stressing it to him for years now. The people in this street do not want a sidewalk.
Okay.
Well, someone made a decision to put the sidewalk in.
Yeah.
And I get it every, every time I walk down the street, hope for not getting a sidewalk. When can we get our street done?
Okay.
Now, our street, Cedar, is one of the poorest ones in the city.
Yeah, no, no, Counsel Duran, there's many other streets around the city that are in poorer condition, not just Cedar. But.
I never said that. I said it's one of the top.
It's not on the agenda.
It's in the classification that it's very poor.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda. It's a report. Yeah, it's not on the agenda. It's a report. So what we'll do, we'll ask that, if you want to put it on the agenda, that has to go through the Public Works Standing Committee, and that will be a recommendation from the committee to forward it for the next meeting. That's where it is. Counsel McCabe.
Actually, Your Worship, because we have discussed this, because the manager has provided, had a community meeting with all residents in that area. I know there are some people that maybe don't want an active transportation trail along Cedar Avenue, but that is the plan operationally. I'm going to allow Scott to talk to this, and that's when they plan to redo Cedar. But Scott, could you follow up on that?
Counsel McCabe, this is just a report. I think the Act and CAO has made it clear, like, it's not on the agenda. We will deal with it through the committee. Counsel Dron, for the next Public Works Standing Committee meeting, please show up, because this would be business arising from the minutes. Okay, let's go back to the agenda.
This could go back to the council meeting, couldn't it?
We'll go back to the agenda. Motion to move into a closed session as per section 119, subsection 1B and E of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. Information B, information received in confidence, which if disclosed, would likely be prejudicial to the municipality or parties involved. And E, matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. And those three items are negotiations for land purchase, negotiations for land exchange, and indemnification agreement. That's all in your package. Moved? Moved, second, moved by the deputy, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. We're going into claus. Can I just?